Counsel, I will call this meeting to order. For the record, it is Tuesday, September fifteenth at six P M. We will begin tonight's meeting with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Cavanagh?
Here.
Councilwoman Perrow? Councilwoman Perrow, you're muted.
My apologies. Here.
Councilwoman Schrader?
Here.
Councilwoman Hoagland?
Here.
Mayor Simison?
Here.
Absent are Councilman Boylan and Councilman Brunch. Next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd all please rise and join us in the pledge.
Our next item on the agenda is our community invocation, which will be led by Pastor Troy Drake with the Southwood Chapel here in Meridian. If you would all please take this as an opportunity to join us in the invocation or take it as a moment for a moment of silence at this time. That's great.
Mr. Mayor, council members, let's pray. Lord God, I was just reminded that your word says that you have made both heaven and earth. That and everything in them are yours. And you also said you will bless those who have a humble and contrite heart. And so, God, I just come before you with those things in mind and in humility and just, first of all, Lord, thank you so much that you've created us and made this place and this time for us to live. And God, we're so thankful for Meridian, the great things about this city. And God, we're just asking for you to protect our community, especially with all the fires going on here in the northwest. We ask that you would protect those who are keeping us safe, whether it's in firefighting or the local first responders and our police officers, those who care for us and keep the peace. And we do pray for peace in our city, God, amidst the upheaval in our world. We pray for our citizens here that we would just be mindful of you and to love our neighbors ourselves. So, God, lastly, I just want to pray for the council meeting. And we're thankful that we get to just seek you for them and that you would give them a great wisdom that, Lord, it seems like you don't think any matters are too small. And so, I just pray for all things that they will discuss on behalf of our city and that you will bless them as they've just agreed to be our elected officials. So, thank you so much, God, for them and pray that you give them a lot of grace, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Bless you guys.
Thank you. Counsel, next item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
I move the adoption of the agenda as presented.
I have a motion and a second to adopt the agendas published. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The ayes have it and the agenda is adopted. Next item is the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
I move approval of the consent agenda for the mayor to sign and clerk to attest.
I have a motion and a second from Councilman Cavanagh to adopt the adj- approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. There were no items moved from the consent agenda, so we'll move on to the public forum. Mr. Clerk, did we have anyone signing up under this item?
Mr. Mayor, yes, Chev Campbell.
Campbell, if you'd come forward, you'll be recognized for three minutes.
Yes, my name's Chev Campbell and I'm here to talk about the Jocelyn Park subdivision. Is this the proper time for me to do that?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Campbell, actually, I'm sorry, the forum, you signed up for the public forum and I, by the note, I thought this was something else, so that is coming up on the agenda. So, we'll call your name then.
All right, thank you.
Okay. So, no one else signed up under the public forum?
That is correct, sir.
Okay. All right, then we will move on to item A, a resolution. Counsel, what you have before you is a resolution to appoint Stephen Yearsley to the Meridian Planning and Zoning Commission. We did have a vacancy recently for a position that is through January of this year. When I looked at the survey results from the community and saw how important the top of the growth and planning is, I thought it was really important that we make sure we get the right person to serve on planning and zoning. In addition, when I look at the makeup of the current planning-
Mr. Mayor, you're cutting in and out.
Okay, let us reduce the volume of this room.
We're close, we can hear you.
In addition, South Meridian really does not have anybody on the planning and zoning commission from South Meridian. So, it's important to me that we find the right person. And Mr. Yearsley, who's got plenty of experience, is free to come on and serve through January, that will, she'll give us time to find hopefully the person that will represent this community in a way that these are should be from that part of our community to have well-balanced commission. So, with that, I'm pleased to support you for considering and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Just to let you know, you're kind of fading in and out. I think we got the gist of it. I know it's hard to get it, get it right with the microphones, but I'd say we're getting about every other word and it's very faint. I also don't have video as well.
Well, it's our goal to keep you in the dark tonight, so.
That's okay, Mr. Mayor. We'll survive, we'll make it through.
Just to reiterate, Stephen has experience. He's agreed to serve temporarily, through January at least, which will give us an opportunity to look for someone else from South Meridian that meets the expectations of where our community is as a release of planning and zoning.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
I'm certainly supportive of this recommendation. I'm just curious, it sounds like then maybe you and Mr. Yearsley at least discussed maybe serving in addition, passed that time in January when the appointment is up, or is this really designed to be a temporary piece while we find a more permanent solution from South Meridian?
I took what I could get for now, which was through January, and I think he has to figure some things out on his end as well, if he would even consider wanting to go further.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Perrow.
Well, I would like to say I had the pleasure of serving with Mr. Yearsley on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and he is a fantastic commissioner and a huge asset to the city. So, thank you, Steve, so much for being willing to do this in the interim. I appreciate it. I know all of the council appreciates it and you are a fantastic leader on that commission and I am secretly hoping and praying that you will stay for another term.
Thank you.
Councilman Hoagland.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I agree with what's been said about Stephen. He certainly serves this community well and loves this community and appreciate him taking the opportunity to fill this seat for a short time and hopefully longer, but we'll see. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I would move we approve resolution number twenty dash twenty-two twenty-nine, appointing Stephen Yearsley to seat four of the Meridian Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution number twenty dash twenty-two twenty-nine. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Thank you very much, and he will start work on Thursday.
It's a big one.
Yes, it is a big one. Okay, our next item on the agenda is item number nine, a public hearing for Jocelyn Park subdivision, H twenty twenty dash zero zero six seven. I will open this public hearing with staff comments and turn it over to Joe.
Mr. Mayor, my apologies. If I can let Councilwomen Schrader and Perrow know, I just sent the hearing outline. I accidentally did not send that earlier, so it is in their inbox right now.
Thank you, Chris. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Can everybody hear me okay? Okay, good. Thank you for having me tonight. As stated, this loan application tonight is for Jocelyn Park subdivision, H dash twenty twenty dash zero zero six seven. This site consists of twelve point six five, six seven five acres, sorry, of land, currently zoned R eight and is located on the south side of West Victory Road, approximately a quarter mile west of South Meridian Road. Adjacent to this site is residential in all directions and zoned residential. To the northeast, well, I should say, to the northeast is the only county on Clay left and was recently heard for a comp plan map amendment. The west is Timberline subdivision that is currently being built in two phases and is zoned R eight. And the subdivision to the east is Meridian Heights and is also zoned R eight. The subject property was annexed in two thousand thirteen as part of a larger area known as Victory South. There is an existing D A associated with this annexation and property, but the requested application and the recorded D A do not require modification as the proposed development is consistent with the provisions contained within the agreement. In addition, a preliminary plat was approved for this property in two thousand eighteen for the same titled plat name, Jocelyn Park. The existing plat is set to expire in December of this year. The current developer wishes to obtain approval of a new plat with higher density, more in line with the dimensional standards of the existing R eight zoning. The proposed development is located in an area of the city where low and medium density residential developments are existing and anticipated. The subject site is surrounded by existing city of Meridian zoning, except for the small parcel that abuts its northeastern property boundary. Therefore, this project is an infill development for the definitions in city code. The proposed development has a gross density of five point one dwelling units per acre, meeting the density requirements for the medium density residential future land use designation of three to eight. In addition, the existing R eight zoning allows for detached single-family residences with average lot sizes of at least four thousand square feet. The proposed development meets this requirement as well. This development is proposed as one phase with an average lot size of four thousand four hundred and fifty-five square feet. Staff finds the proposed use and gross density to meet the intent of the future land use designation and zoning district. Specifically on this plat, to note, there is a sliver north of a small canal road that the applicant is deeding over to the owner of the county parcel to the northeast, because he has a couple sheds and things like that, that the owner would rather just deed him the land rather than deal with the property boundary adjustments and things like that. Access for this development is proposed via extension of sub streets from adjacent subdivisions. The sub street located in the southeast corner of the site, West Winnipeg Street, is an existing stub from Meridian Heights subdivision. The other proposed connection is connected, is located in the northwest corner of the site but is not yet constructed. This connection is to be constructed with phase two of the Timberline subdivision, which has received final plat approval but has not yet received city engineer signature. These two local streets will supply the access points for this development. In addition, the applicant is proposing to Stubby Street to the property located to the northeast of the site for future connectivity. On this sub street, the applicant is proposing a temporary cul-de-sac turnaround. Off-street parking is required to be provided for single-family detached dwellings based on the number of bedrooms per unit. In addition, the applicant is proposing thirty-three foot street sections within forty-seven feet of right-of-way, which would allow on-street parking where no driveways exist. A minimum of ten percent open space, meeting the standards listed in U D C eleven three G, is required. Based on the proposed plat of twelve point nine three acres, a minimum of one point two nine acres of qualified open space should be provided. According to the open space exhibit, the applicant is proposing a total of three point six five acres of open space. The exhibit shows three different distinct areas of open space. One area in the south that contains the existing pond that is to remain, one area along the entire northern boundary of the subject site, and one centralized area. A large open space lot containing the pond abuts open space area in the Timberline Number One subdivision, currently under construction. In addition, there is a micro pathway to the, connection to the west, shown on the open spaces exhibit, that also connects to the Timberline subdivision, that is this one right here, along the western boundary. The existing pond in the south of the site is more than twenty-five percent of the lot in which it resides, and therefore that open space lot cannot qualify according to U D C standards. The other area of open space that is listed as qualifying but is not qualifying is the in cap lot directly north of the pond open space lot. This area meets neither the fifty by one hundred dimensions nor the five thousand square foot dimensions, as it is approximately forty-two hundred square feet. After removing the in cap lot and the lot containing the pond from the open space, there are still two point four six acres of qualified open space. This area is still vastly more than the required minimums. An area that was of concern for staff within the open space area was that area directly north of lots thirty-five through thirty-seven at the end of the cul-de-sac here. The applicant, oh, sorry. The commission recommended rotating lots thirty-five and thirty-six and move the micro pathway to the east, further opening up this area behind the homes. The applicant has submitted a revised plat showing this change and staff finds that it is better for overall visibility from this corridor back here. However, the width of the micro path lot does not appear to meet U D C requirements of being at least fifteen feet wide. The applicant should provide revisions to the plat to ensure the micro path lot meets code requirements. The revised plat also shows the micro path lot along the western part of the central open space to be located between lots ten and eleven block three, as recommended by staff. So, as you can see, this is the revised plat with those two changes. These lots rotated, this moved up, and this was the previous layout. There are no multi-use pathways proposed or required with this development. There is an existing multi-use pathway on the north side of Victory Road, directly north of the subject site. The applicant is proposing micro pathways in multiple locations within the development to add pedestrian and bicycle connections throughout. These pathways connect to the central open space with the five feet attached sidewalks located along the local streets throughout the development as well. The applicant is also proposing a micro pathway connection on the west side of the project to connect with a pathway and open space in Timberline Number One. Based on the area of the plat, a minimum of one qualified site amenity is required to be provided. The applicant is proposing four qualified amenities to satisfy the requirements. A child's play structure, a shaded picnic area, which are both in the north open space lot, walking paths, which, again, mostly located in the central open space lot, and an additional twenty thousand square feet of qualified open space. The commission requested that an amenity that provides some form of seating be added to the open space lot that contains the pond. The applicant has verbally agreed to adhere to this but has not yet provided an updated landscape plan depicting this. The Rydenbach Canal runs through the northern portion of the property and it essentially makes up the required landscape buffer along Victory Road. Per the U D C, the waterway is required to be tiled, however, the applicant wishes to keep the canal open and act as the buffer between Victory Road and Arterial Street and the common open space slot proposed south of the canal. Staff supports this proposition by the applicant. Therefore, the applicant is requesting a council waiver to keep the canal open. The location of the canal in relation to Victory Road also brings up another issue with the required frontage improvements along Victory Road by A C H D and city code. Code dictates that sidewalks are required when the property has frontage on public roads like that of Victory Road. Similarly, A C H D has conditioned the applicant to construct detached sidewalk along Victory Road no closer than thirty-one feet from center line. This requirement would place the sidewalk within the irrigation district easement and into the toe of the slope of the raised canal. Since the commission meeting, the applicant has met with the irrigation district to obtain approval of placing the sidewalk on one of the canal roads along the Rydenbach Canal to meet this requirement and construct a detached sidewalk. This request was denied by the irrigation district unanimously. In addition, the applicant has filed an appeal of the sidewalk condition with A C H D citing these same issues. It is my understanding that they will not be on the, be able to get to that commission meeting until sometime in October with A C H D. However, there is no avenue within our U D C for this requirement of the sidewalk to be waived and is not eligible for variance as it is not considered a structure by building code. Staff understands the position that the applicant is in, but generally speaking, it is up to the applicant to find a solution and not necessarily the city. However, with the situation at hand, staff has a few options if council is willing to hear that out briefly with this here, this exhibit. You can see the red, this was made by the applicant, by the way, I stole this from them, it's very good. The red is supposed to be where the A C H D condition would place the sidewalk, which is well into the toe of the slope and, again, into the irrigation district easement that they are not allowed to go into as, I guess, as yesterday that they sent that over. There is a canal road along the north side of the canal and one along the south side. Irrigation District does not want pedestrians on there at all. This green area, as you can see, would be the shoulder, then you have the gravel, actually the barrow ditch, and then the shoulder here. So, as you can see, there's not, with the two conditions of A C H D and the irrigation district not cooperating either with this, there is not room for the detached sidewalk at this place here. One of the ways that staff has found that we could meet the intent of a detached sidewalk is in Timberline Number Two, there is a micro path lot connecting to the sidewalk along Victory here that will connect to the local street and then all of these sidewalks will connect that will offer future connectivity to the east. With the applications that were heard for the comp plan map amendment, I believe by either city council or planning and zoning for this northeast corner, they were required to put the sidewalk on the south side of the canal as well. So, there will be no detached sidewalk or sidewalk on the north side of this canal, which would be on the south side of Victory Road. So, if council wanted to do one of the options, they wouldn't be missing anything with a random splice of sidewalk along the south side of Victory Road. Again, there is the ten-foot multi-use pathway along the north side of Victory Road. I believe the applicant also has some options that they are willing to discuss as well with city council. That is the outstanding issue from the commission meeting. In general, for the key issues of discussion by the commission were the applicability and location of the required sidewalk along Victory Road as discussed. The location of fencing along the Rydenbach Canal and the mislaving, mislabeling of the irrigation district's access road as a pathway for the proposed plat. The layout and placement and usability of the proposed open space, specifically how an amenity can be added to the open space lot containing the pond and how to open up the central open space lot more. Fourth, the issue of the sliver of open space behind the cul-de-sac lots is outlined by staff. And fifth, the, to clarify staff's comments on the fencing within the north and south open space lots regarding open vision or having an opening to connect to the open space lots between Timberline and this subdivision. The commission recommended five changes to the staff report. Strike condition number four, modify conditions one A and three B to reflect rotating the lots to the west at the end of the cul-de-sac. Add a condition to lose a buildable lot around the central open space. Add condition to provide a looped sidewalk within the north open space lot. Add condition to add or remove an amenity that will provide seating on the open space lot containing the open water pond. As stated, the outstanding issue for city council is this sidewalk issue along Victory Road. Since the commission hearing, there was one public comment from Chris Vondencamp concerned that the property may be part of a national wetlands. Since that came in, the applicant worked diligently with the Army Corps of Engineers and has received a letter from them stating that that was the case up until two thousand fourteen. The city worked with the previous agency out here to clean that up and it has been nothing but fill since then. So, as of the letter from the Army Corps of Engineers, again, there's no wetlands on this property and so it should be a non-issue going forward. And after that, I will stand for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Mr. Mayor, Joe, this issue of the sidewalk is kind of a sticky wicket, but as you're going east along the Rydenbach where their sidewalk ends and you've got the big curve for West Victory, it looks like that same situation occurs all the way probably up to Meridian Road. Is that correct?
Councilmember Hoagland, yes, sir, that is correct. With the A C H D's comments regarding this frontage for the comp plan map amendment to the northeast, there's no room on, between the canal and Victory Road, so they are also going to have it on the south side of the canal. So, there's, this issue, yes, persists all the way to Meridian Road. Unfortunately, this section of Victory or none of Victory, as far as I'm known, is in the next five-year work plan to be widened or rerouted, so this type of issue is going to persist no matter what property, no matter what project is proposed.
Thank you. And a follow-up on that, so the property to the east has already been approved to not provide a sidewalk along Victory Road?
The northeast, no, it was heard by, I apologize, I don't remember, I think at least commission, and it was recommended for denial, however, that one of the requirements from A C H D was to have the sidewalk on the south side of the canal. Nonetheless, that, I'm using that as a reference of the pathway, that, the line of thinking that is going forward with that, not necessarily anything that has been conditioned.
Okay. So, to relate, related, because my question was related to the decision, is the decision to not tile creating part of this problem? Or if the, if it was tiled, would there be adequate space for a sidewalk, or does it have to go into the Napa Meridian easement space where they would not allow it? I guess, because of what, to your point, I mean, this area is not one that is planned for redevelopment. This corner is, I mean, this stretch of road is, as far as I'm concerned, the most dangerous stretch of road in Meridian that I'm aware of, or the potential. I don't know that there's been accidents, but it's crazy.
Right.
And it, so I'm just kind of curious what the long-term plan and vision for that area is, because if the answer is to tile the entire Rydenbach through that area, it provides the safety for people as compared to having them trying to cross the road in this area versus the decision not to, that's really where I'm kind of wondering.
Understood. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for clarifying that, yes. From my understanding, tiling this had not come up throughout this process, so I don't know where Napa Meridian stands on that. I do know that all the way along this area, it has not been tiled, and that does not mean that it, doesn't need to be, but, again, I'm not sure where that would stand with the applicant nor Napa Meridian at this juncture.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Perrow.
Joe, thank you for your presentation. These pictures are very helpful. Question about that multi-use pathway on the north, does that extend all the way to Meridian Road? You just show on the photo here that, that it's, you know, partly around the curve, but does that extend all the way to Meridian Road? And if so, is it possible for the applicant to request signage? The A C H D put in a sign that clarifies that there's not a walkway on the south side?
Councilwoman Perrow, members of the council, that is correct, yes. The ten-foot multi-use pathway does go all the way to Meridian Road.
Okay.
I'm assuming that there could be some signage in place, if not by A C H D, by the applicant, to make sure that there's, notice that there's no sidewalk on this, on the south side of Victory.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Perrow.
Thank you, Joe. I was, I was referencing specifically at the intersection of Victory and Meridian, which I assume the applicant wouldn't be permitted to put a sign there. But I've not run across this before, but I think it would be helpful for anybody who's crossing over, who is accessing directly from Meridian Road, that they're aware that that they, that's the only pedestrian space. And I don't know, I don't know if that's something actually that the applicant has to work with, with A C H D as part of this application, or if that's something that would happen separately. or if that's something that would happen separately.
Thank you, Counselor Holton Pro. I appreciate the clarification.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, Counselor McTrader.
Um, thank you, Joe. I, is there, it, it just seems like common sense to me, or like it would make more sense if the Irrigation District were to work with everybody and, you know, try to create some kind of a sidewalk there along their road. I know they don't usually do that. Is there an appeal process? Or is there a way that the city could try to weigh in to influence them? Just curious from your perspective if, if we've ever been able to do that. Uh, thanks.
Counselor McTrader, um, I do happen to agree with you. I wish that was something that is more applicable right now to work with Napa Meridian. We did do a site visit, and that was the assumption that we could try to make that work because it was detached and, and it would be able to cross everything that needed to be crossed. But Napa Meridian has been through email and through meetings, and specifically with the applicant, has been very adamant that they do not want anybody on or near their, this canal. So, I, I don't know personally where the city could flex anything with that. Um, it is my understanding that Napa Meridian will do what they need to do to protect their rights.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor McTrader.
I guess maybe a question for you, if you're open to it. Um, you've been around the city longer than I have. Do you think there's any chance of us, you know, trying to influence them, maybe from, you know, the mayor's office or something along those lines, or a letter from council? Just curious what your perspective is on it. It just seems like a shame to not, you know, develop this the, the way that it should, maybe work better for everybody, but...
Uh, my honest opinion is I don't think a letter from the mayor and council will weigh, have any impact on their long, on their spec- decision specific to this parcel and this application. However, I think that there's a, not knowing where all this is going, I think there's a better conversation to be had about what should this entire stretch look like from here to the road. I think that there's a better conversation to be had with them about that and the long-term needs. But, um, that's my two cents, and I, I say that with all due respect. They, they, they guard the, these, these areas in the Rydenbach very stringily.
Thank you.
Counsel, any further questions for staff at this time? Okay. Um, do we ha- I assume we have the applicant online or, oh, in, in the room, okay. If you'd like to come forward, you'd be recognized for fifteen minutes. You can say your name and address, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Bonnie Layton. I'm with, uh, WH Pacific, NB Five. I'm at six ninety South Industry Way in Meridian, Idaho, eight three six four two. And I'm here before you tonight, um, for our client and, uh, to discuss Jocelyn Park. Thank you for your time this evening. Kind of odd, um, speaking with everybody and not being able to see everyone's full face. Um, Joseph's done a great job, and we really appreciate the hard work of staff on this. Um, and in the interest of time, I think, you know, Joseph did a, a great job of going through the project and some of the revisions that we had sent over, um, and some of the conditions, I think, um, for us. Of course, this is a, um, we believe that this project is in compliance with the comprehensive plan and is a nice addition to the community and, um, another option for, or, uh, choice for, uh, residential housing type in the city. Again, in compliance with the comprehensive plan and the densities that, that you have outlined. And, um, with that, we feel like it's a, it's a great infill piece and a, a good use of, of a piece of property that's, um, sat vacant for a while and was reclaimed from, um, from our previous sewer lagoon, um, facility, uh, that was decommissioned, um, in two thousand and fourteen, um, yeah, in conjunction with the city of Meridian, uh, assisting with that and pumping those lagoons dry and, um, connecting the subdivision to the east, um, onto City Services. So, um, our, the applicant acquired this property within the last year. Um, there were some design plans going, going forward on it. Um, the open space, we believe we've provided, um, as Joseph mentioned, uh, more than the minimum standard for the open space. Um, tried to do micro paths for connectivity, not just within our site, but to adjacent properties. Um, and then leaving the pond at the south end, um, as a kind of man-made, but now sort of natural amenity with maybe a park bench or something, um, to really just add, uh, something, something to the quality of the area. Um, with that, I think I'll just, um, cut to the, the main issue at hand that we're discussing. And, um, as Joseph mentioned, we had several meetings, um, conversations, emails, site visit regarding the sidewalk and the improvements. And, um, it was a condition of planning and zoning. We, we discussed the issue, uh, with them, and, um, they moved it forward. And, um, we met with the Irrigation District. I made a formal application and met with them last week on a request to place the sidewalk in, um, showed them the two options as you saw on the, how do I get back to this other? Oops. On either side of the canal road. Um, as you can see from this image that's on the screen right now, um, this location, uh, along Victory Road is very unique, as, as you know. Um, it's really a hairpin turn. Um, the grade, uh, elevation changes, um, on the west side, where there's a sixteen-foot, um, drop in the, in the road elevation. And you can kind of see that from some of the photos that I took from the site. Um, so it's this kinda hairpin corner as you're coming, uh, heading east, coming down around the corner. Um, when I spoke with the Irrigation District, they said they often see tire tracks up along the toe of their bank or up, up way their bank. So, we believe that that's a pretty unsafe condition for pedestrians. And in talking with ACHD, um, they were insistent that we seek permission from the Irrigation District. Um, everything that staff at the district had told us led us to believe that that was probably not going to happen, and they were correct, um, even though we tried to propose a couple of different options, either on the north side or on the south side with some fencing to keep people out of an attractive nuisance so that nobody has to, you know, fish children out of a canal. Um, that said, they, um, told us no. And so, we're trying to come up with a solution that meets the intent and the purpose of sidewalks and public use ways for pedestrians. Um, and, um, as Joseph mentioned, obviously, we have connectivity in, um, in our site, uh, on this, on the sidewalks that are adjacent to the street to connect into Timberline a- and the micro paths. But as we get up to Victory Road, um, you know, there's no five-year plan for ACHD to straighten that road out or realign it. I, uh, it's my understanding that the parcel that's, uh, north of us, there's actually two parcels. Joseph, do you have a, a image that shows? Um, so, yes, thank you. So, right where the arrow is, so there's an out parcel, and then there's the big RUT parcel that's supposed to be some sort of multifamily. I have not seen a plan for that yet. Um, but we, but we're still dealing with this out parcel. So, the realignment of, of the canal or, or the road, you know, um, to my knowledge, none of that has been considered in any of those parcels going forward, I think, to one of the questions, one of the commissioners had, one of the comments. And so, just really looking at that, do we wanna put a bunch of folks, um, you know, down in a low corner, uh, that's, that's unsafe, that's within the Irrigation District's easement, which they've said, no, we're not gonna allow that anyways? So, we said, what can we do that would be a great alternative? And of course, um, we've identified on the north side of Victory Road that there's this very substantial and, um, well-built piece of city infrastructure, this ten-foot public pathway. And, um, I was out there, I didn't see a whole lot of folks on it. Um, it's nice because it's off of the road, um, separated from the road quite a bit. So, the comfortability, uh, for a pedestrian and, and bikes and moms with their, um, with their strollers, it, you feel very safe, um, having that level of separation. And so, what we had looked at in this is how do we maximize the use of that city infrastructure to achieve really what we wanna achieve, um, as a community? And, um, and so, we were proposing, what if there was a crossing, um, at the entrance to the Timberline subdivision that was clearly marked, that would, um, identify for people, this is where you're going to cross? Um, from a topography standpoint, there's visibility in that location. As you move to the east, the road starts to slope down. Um, but we felt like that's probably the, the safest alternative for pedestrians. And likewise, you could do something, um, out towards, um, Meridian Road that, um, or, um, oops. As you head east, sorry, Joseph, if you could pull that, pull up the, the main map. Thank you. So, as you go out to Meridian Road, just sort of again, I'm not sure how those properties, um, to the east of us are actually gonna be laid out and developed. But I think a, a good alternative would be to really clearly encourage pedestrians in that area. Get them all to the north side of Victory, you know, to provide the most safety as possible. Um, and with that, I think I, I think I covered everything. Joseph did a great job. So, I can stand for any, any questions that you have, um, regarding our application or, um, the solution that we've proposed, um, to solve this frontage. We'd ask that, that the City Council consider that condition of approval from Planning and Zoning and, uh, maybe, um, accept our proposal, um, in light of the fact, um, that the Irrigation District has said no. And then we ask for your support for when we go to ACHD to try to resolve this issue, um, so that we can develop this community into much-needed homes.
Thank you, Bonnie. Um, just a, to question and a comment. Is the property to, and it, have you spoken to ACHD about that crossing and the property to the west? And are they open to that? Is someone gonna put it in? Is that, um, the plan? And a secondary comment, just so council's aware, is, uh, down at the intersection of Meridian Road where you would be putting people that, there is no access to the roadway. It's actually a curved corner that does not have, um, pedestrian access unless you walk through the grass in that section. So, that Meridian-Victory intersection would need to have improvements as well if we're gonna put people to that corner? Because it, it does not have a safe crossing even to go across Victory, that, or Meridian Road on that side. So, but I'd be curious about, you know, the, the first part of my question.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, for the first part of your question, um, the answer that we had from ACHD is you need to go ask the Irrigation District. They were adamant that we did that, um, even though the Irrigation District said, you know, this is probably not gonna happen. I asked the board.
I'm, I'm just talking about the crossing of the road. You, you're showing a pathway that crosses on someone else's property, if I'm not mistaken. The yellow pathway that's on that.
Oh, I, I, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Um, to be quite honest with you, and Joseph, jump in here if I'm mistaken, but I mean, that wasn't, even on the radar, it was like, put this in, in the Irrigation easement, and until you talk to them, you know, we're, we don't have the authority to, um, tell you, yeah, that would be a good option because it's a ver- it, we actually have to appeal what the staff has recommended, which is put us in a rock and hard place because they've required us to put per their, um, regulations, a sidewalk in a location that we're not allowed to put it. So, we're kinda caught between two agencies. So, we're trying to come up with a thoughtful, safe solution for the residents of the community, um, in the entire area. And so, that would be our appeal is to put it there, you know, and, and that's why we're asking, we would be asking, um, humbly for your support on that.
So, you, you haven't talked, you don't have anything official from ACHD or the property owner to know if that would be amenable to them?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, we are scheduled to be before ACHD on October seventh, and that's what we would be asking for at that time. The entrance to Timberline subdivision is going in. I, um, the timing of that, that's under construction at this point. And so, we, you know, we've asked to work with, um, with staff on that to get that resolved.
Counsel, qu- other questions for the applicant?
Pardon me?
I'm asking, counsel, any other questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Kavner.
Bonnie, thanks for being here. Uh, appreciate the quick turnaround trying to engage the Army Corps of Engineers. Uh, I just, I didn't, I hadn't realized that you had got a response until I think Joe brought it up. So, I was trying to glance through it, uh, during, during, uh, your testimony, but I was, wanted to give you an opportunity to summarize a little of that. I didn't see if there was anything from the Army Corps of Engineers included in this, it's a fairly large packet that you sent us. So, I didn't know if there was anything from them or just kinda what you have summarized from your conversation with them at the top.
Um, uh, thank you, Councilman Kavner. Um, what we did is we spoke with the Army Corps this afternoon. We received the email about, um, ten thirty, eleven o'clock this morning and got right on the phone. I, I left a message. Matt Monger in our office also left a message. Um, we finally got a call back. Just looking at the history of that site, and I included, I believe, Joseph, um, it was late. I was trying to, you know, really go through everything and make sure that I dr- addressed it thoroughly. So, uh, basically, in regard to the issue in that letter that we received really last minute, you know, this issue hadn't, hadn't come up. Um, and looking at the history of the site, as you know, these are former sewer lagoons that were decommissioned. And, um, when I looked at the, at the site, um, there was, I went online and it clearly states, and I think you can see it in my letter that I wrote, that, um, the mapping was done in this particular area in nineteen eighty-one with, um, infrared imagery. So, um, it picks up, um, there's areas according to staff at Army Corps, there's areas that it picks up that aren't applicable or not actually what, what they think it is, and then other areas that should be in there that aren't. And so, um, we tried to address this as quickly as possible. Um, our client sent over the report that they had in their files, which was the final decommissioning report done by Keller Associates in twenty fourteen. I think that did a really great job of outlining what actually was the site condition, um, throughout the history of the property. So, um, it, if, if we look through that report, those lagoon, the first portion of the glue, lagoon, the smaller one, where that, uh, blue bubble is on, on that screenshot that was sent over from the comment letter today, that was actually the first part of the lagoon. And then the second part, the larger part, was added in the early nineties. Um, but in between adding of that, that's when this infrared lidar at one to fifty-eight thousand, uh, foot level flew the site and picked it up as, oh, this is a wetland. No, it was, it, it was sewer lagoon. In the nineties, when that north piece was added, um, they did a, a lined pond on the larger one, and they lined the smaller one and aerated it. So, it really functioned as a sewer lagoon the entire time. It was just a mislabel from a fifty-eight thousand foot level perspective on, at some antiquated, um, infrared from nineteen eighty-one. So, those maps don't necessarily get updated all the time. Um, and again, there's sometimes there's things that are in there that are not applicable and vice versa. So, looking through the history of, um, you know, thankfully, we've got this decommissioning report. Um, and, you know, this has been a dry site since twenty fourteen. I mean, I think the report is very clear and thorough on that, that, um, that the city helped drain those ponds. that, um, that the city helped drain those ponds. And over the years, still has been brought in, um, prior to my client, the applicant, um, acquiring the property even. And, um, as I noted in my letter, I think in the, in the last paragraph, that the drainage pond that's on the south end of the property actually is a man-made drainage pond, but an amenity that we're keeping. So there's actually a viable wetland that's not identified on that or a viable, um, water amenity that's not identified in that mapping system. So it, you know, that, we're not losing anything, but we weren't really losing anything to begin with because it was a sewer lagoon and not a wetland. So, um, it's kind of long-winded, but hopefully that-
I appreciate it.
Um, you know, I know those are sensitive topics, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Um, yeah, I, thank you. Uh, I'd like to get the applicant's, uh, reaction to just floating out there the possibility of a continuance. If we were to continue this application, would that give you, you know, time to work with ACHD on a solution and kind of come back to us with a crosswalk that, that's been kind of flushed out? And, and sort of perhaps that even would give us time to work a little more on a comprehensive solution for the, for the whole area with the irrigation district? I'm just curious how you would react to that, to that approach.
Um, Councilwoman Schrader, hi. Um, thank you for your question. Um, what we were hoping to get from you is, um, an acknowledgement that maybe this is a, a, a good alternative that you could support in light of this very unique, um, and specific condition in this corner. And, um, it doesn't, there's no pathway on this side that shows up in the city plan. There's no five-year plan for ACHD. You know, so we're essentially, as I mentioned, sort of, um, stuck between a rock and a hard place on that, trying to figure out, um, I, it, it would be great, um, to be able to go to ACHD and say that, yes, in this instance, the city, you know, does believe that this is a viable and, um, a safe solution, um, that achieves the same objectives, which is to move pedestrians through the area. So, I mean, if we, if it was maybe a condition of the final plat or, uh, approval of the final plat so that we could keep moving forward, I'm concerned that we'll get in this back and forth, well, get the approval from the city, get the approval from, you know, and we'll just keep going back and forth, back and forth. Um, that is my only concern. Respectfully, Councilwoman Schrader.
Mr. Mayor, a quick follow-up.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Yeah, I guess just to react to that a little bit. No one wants you to be caught in a bureaucratic feedback loop that leads to nowhere, believe me. But I guess I'm not convinced that the case has been made that this crosswalk is safe. And I think that's a big concern of mine. Even that solution, I'm not sure I've been presented personally as one of the members with a full solution that, that I feel comfortable with yet. Um, I'm hearing there's a hairpin turn and there's cars flying down this road. How, how do we know that that, you know, crosswalk, I guess, would be an adequate solution? I, I just don't see how, I, I personally am just not there yet.
And Councilwoman Schrader, I'm gonna piggyback on your, your comment because what I, what I've heard so far is that this is an area that has a lot of interest from several different people in developing it. We don't know, and ACHD doesn't necessarily have a plan, but we have one opportunity to get this area right. And making a, what I'm gonna call just a, well, let's go that direction because that seems to be the easiest as compared to working with the neighbors to the east, working with the irrigation district and working with ACHD and the other property owners to come up with a plan for how this entire sec- intersection and roadway to this area is gonna function. Because, um, I, I don't feel like I have any idea, any knowledge of what the long-term vision for this is, whether it's density or, you know, traffic patterns or otherwise. But it, it's a real challenge to try to suggest that this is something that we should do today in a, moving this forward with so many questions when there's a, obviously, a group of people that have an interest in developing this area that could work together to find the best long-term solution for the community. That's, so I'm piggybacking on your statement. I would even go further, the continuance, the short-term continues is probably not the best interest, but a longer-term conversation to get to the real viable solution for the future. That's my dissent. Because I, what, what does ACHD's need to make this roadway really work? It may not be on their five-year work plan. I guarantee you, the way it's designed now is not what their needs are going to be long-term.
Mr. Mayor.
In there, if we could bring him in if necessary. Councilwoman Perrow.
Uh, just wanted to make sure I understood, um, Joseph's statement when he was doing his presentation. I thought I understood him to say that counsel, that there's not any kind of waiver that we can do of this, I mean, it's an ACHD requirement essentially. So there isn't anything that allows us to, to grant, essentially to grant this, at the applicant's request for us to, to grant an approval. We, we really can't essentially do that. It's my understanding. Is that right? I mean, we don't, we don't have a mechanism in our code that allows us to overlook ACHD's requirement.
Councilwoman Perrow. Uh, Mr. Mayor, so what I meant by that is there's no avenue for counsel to waive that requirement from our code, not ACHD's. Um, obviously, we're competing agencies, so to speak. But there's no way for us to say, "You don't have to put in the sidewalk at all." That's the key point there. And that's not something that we want to encourage either. Um, you know, as Bonnie has stated, we're, we've been working through this for months now, trying to figure this out and work with the different agencies, um, involved. Uh, I do have a, the final plat for Timberline. If I could show that from, uh, Councilwoman Schrader and for the benefit of the council to show where the pedestrian crossing that Bonnie was speaking about would be, just to clarify that. I'll share my screen, maybe. Okay, so this is the approved final plat for Timberline number two. So Jocelyn Park is this property budding to the east. Um, all of these streets will have attached sidewalk. This is a common lot that will have a micro pathway to it connecting to the sidewalk out to Victory Road, um, here. But Timberline is stopping the sidewalk right at the edge of the canal easement, which actually is not even all the way to the property line. It's actually even a little bit further into the site than that. Um, so my first comment regarding that was to potentially count the sidewalk, the detached sidewalk from Victory to be the attached sidewalk on the proposed local street because there's this connection out to Victory here. The second option that Bonnie has brought up is to say, to build the pedestrian crossing up here from this road up north to the pathway on the, well, it's actually just a sidewalk that then connects to the pathway to the east on the north side of Victory Road. So, uh, Councilwoman Schrader, that she, Bonnie was referring to how bad the further east part of Victory Road is, whereas here is a little flatter. You have visibility on both east and west of this crossing if it were to be used as a pedestrian crossing. So I just wanted to clarify that for everybody so they kind of understood the placement.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perrow.
In theory, um, I would be comfortable with that. But to Councilwoman Schrader's point, I still, um, think there's more work that needs to be done before I'm ready to make a decision and have a comfort level that that, that that is a solid plan for pedestrian route. Um, I don't know, um, guess if maybe you could provide some more information for, um, when, when or if the pedestrian crossing is going to be implemented? And any information conversation you have with the Timberline developers? I don't know if they're the same, um, group is, is developing or, or is going to be building in, um, in your subdivision as well? If, if that's the case, maybe it'll be a little bit more fluid of a solution. Um, but I, I don't, I'm kind of torn as to whether I need to see an, um, a solid plan on the entire area before I approve this. But I definitely want to see a solution for the pedestrian route.
Yeah, is there counsel, any further questions for the applicant? Thank you very much.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Um, if we were, um, in talking with ACHD, if it's something that's even on the radar for the city, you know, to, um, consider in terms of, um, a viable interim option to provide this crossing until there's a longer-range plan for maybe straightening, straightening out Victory Road or handling, you know, how that Ride and Ball Canal, um, you know, makes that very unique bend in, um, in the area. Um, but, you know, to staff's point, you know, we've worked really hard. They didn't have any authority to say, you know, "Yes, we can or can't support something." That really has to come from counsel to say, "Yeah, we'd support this." Maybe, um, investigate that a little bit more potentially for the crossing, um, there. That, again, maybe it's an interim solution, but probably the, the safest option until there's a longer-range plan to Councilwoman, uh, Perrow and, um, Schrader's points, just so that we can keep moving forward with the project.
I, I think that'll be something counsel will consider as they consider this application.
Thank you.
All right, this is a public hearing. I know we do have someone in the audience who's here to testify. But for those that are on the Zoom call as well, if you'd like to provide testimony on this item, please, uh, use the raise your hand function at the bottom, and we will bring you into the meeting. But, um, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, Chev Campbell.
Anything, say your name and address for the record and be recognized for three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Chev Campbell. I live at three five zero five South Peoria Way in Meridian, Idaho, in Meridian Heights subdivision adjacent to the pond and the Jocelyn Park subdivision. I'm here to talk about four different key items. Uh, if I'm able to have you guys pull up that revised plot map that was used earlier.
Mr. Campbell, I know you're a little taller. If you can speak into those and you can, so people-
Sorry, I'm-
No problem. Sorry about that. Yeah, I will pull up a little bit too. Is that better?
Thank you. Uh, I live adjacent to the south pond. I'm the largest piece of property to the west. Uh, my main concern with this is in two thousand and one, my family, uh, had the canal tiled over in our backyard, just as they're suggesting to do for the canal, for the sidewalk. And on there, it states that the adjacent land is a retention pond for drainage as well as the Wilson Creek Wetland Watershed. So I do, would like to know if that's being protected as it's stated in the county rules and regulations. The second part of it that I was asking or wanting to know about is the lot sizes. When this was first brought forward to us, there was only going to be twenty-three homes built in this area. And of course, everybody in our subdivision was like, "Great, nice big pieces of property, just like we like in Idaho." Well, we are small property sizes in regards to a lot of properties adjacent to us. This new subdivision that's going in, Jocelyn Park, the lots are three-quarters the size of even our lots. So once again, it's narrowing how much open space we have. The second part of it that directly relates to that is the park spaces. The new subdivisions that have gone in, Timberline, um, I don't recall the one that's directly south of where Timberline is now. But they have posted in their parks that the, the parks are only for the homeowner use only and that we do not have access to use them. And at the same time, Meridian City dismantled the pump house and killed all the grass in our park in our subdivision. And now our subdivision has no park, no green space, no open space for our children to play in. The second part on the sidewalk issue. Our subdivision has no sidewalks connecting it to the rest of the city, none whatsoever. Our children walk along fifty-five mile an hour roads to get to where they want to go, including their schools, which is very, very difficult and very worrisome to us parents. The main school that a lot of the children are attending is either Mary Mac or Victory. Both great schools, ones that my children have attended. Love them, great teachers, great everything. But now they're gonna have a hard time, as they always had, to access that school because they have to walk along busy roads. So I urge the council to make sure we find something that gives a good sidewalk for our children to walk along to get to school. Uh, the last part that I was concerned about, uh, is, is purely with the ponds and the wet lot or the ponds and the wetlands. Yes, that was a sewer pond before, two of them were. But the last pond has always been, uh, Wilson Creek Watershed and a retention pond for the neighboring subdivisions. It was never part of the sewer system at all. The two ponds that were north of that were part of the sewer system. And one of them was not lined, the other one was lined. Uh, I watched day to day as the non-cleanup happened when it was addressed. They came in, took down the fences and bulldozed over the land, even when it was still wet with water. So that was an inecrite statement. I have pictures of it to show it. I did not know I was gonna need to have that information today or I would have brought it. Sorry, I have a hard time breathing with the mask on.
Okay.
Uh, and I would gladly work with the city council and I could provide that documentation if needed. Um, that basically addresses most of my concerns. Uh, I don't know if anybody has any questions for me.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Councilman Cavanagh.
Jeff, thanks for your testimony, being here tonight. Help me be, make sure that I'm seeing this through, through your eyes. So it looks like there's a pond that's being retained. Is that, is that the same pond that you're referring to? That is kind of the, kind of called a wetland pond? I just want to make sure that what you're talking about is the same thing that the applicant was talking about.
Yes.
Fantastic. Great. Thank you for that piece. Mr. Mayor, additional thoughts?
Councilman Cavanagh.
Jeff, you touched on a piece, and I'm, well, I'm familiar with the South side. I'm not super familiar with your name, but you indicated some, it destroyed your grass.
Yes, I can-
What's happened and then I may call up-
Yes, um, is there a way for me to go through the images on here? For, or can you change them back, go back? Um, I guess that one right there. So this large lot that's at the bottom of the image-
Hmm.
And then there's a small one with two little structures. You're moving your mouse around it right there. That was our old water system. That's where my whole entire subdivision got its waterfront. And that was a landscaped and sprinklered field. I, I don't know the relative space of it. But it's big enough that our kids used to play catching it and have Nerf wars and picnics and lunches. And that was the only green space in our entire subdivision. And since the well was decommissioned, which I believe it was a, a week and a half ago that they finally got it capped off, uh, but over, basically at the beginning of the summer, they turned off the sprinklers and killed all the grass in the entire area. And so now we have absolutely nothing for our kids to play on. So our kids play in the street now, which is very, very dangerous because we have anywhere between two and fifteen trucks that come in to dump dirt in this field that they're trying to fill in. And they don't cover their loads and they don't follow the EPA dust requirements either.
Mr. Mayor?
Would you like Mr. Stewart to respond for that?
I was hoping maybe, yeah, Mr. Stewart would be willing to kind of give us a status update from the water department on that particular piece of grass and what the department's intended use is and just maybe educate the citizens about what they could expect.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So that was a well lot and it was never, uh, just to clarify, it was always a well lot. It was owned by, uh, Meridian Heights and Kentucky Ridge, um, together to provide well to the water system. When we took over, that was transferred to us. So that lot, uh, if I understand correctly, and I believe I do, that is a city of Meridian lot, but that well had uranium in it. And so we abandoned that well, um, according to the DEQ requirements and have decommissioned the site. The building itself was honestly scary to go into because of that wasp's nests all over the place. So I don't know, uh, it was never a park, was never intended to be an amenity for the subdivision. It was always intended to be a, a well site that provided water for that development. Uh, ultimately, I suspect we will someday either construct a new well on the site into a different aquifer or we will try and- or we will try and auction or get rid of the property.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Warren, just for clarification, it sounds like though that maybe we're not maintaining that same piece of property to the same level that it was when we acquired it. Is that accurate?
Um, I can't tell you for sure. I've been out there a while, but I would suspect that that is correct, that we have not watered that, that site. So we will have to maintain it to keep the weeds mowed and things like that, but we would probably not be watering it since it's been, it's basically a vacant lot at this point.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Warren, from a, is there a, I'm not trying to jam me up here, but I'm just trying to understand the, we acquired this piece of property. I get from the neighbor's perspective, it looked really good when it was under the neighborhood's control. And now that it's under the city control, normally we've got a reputation of improving stuff when we take it over. And it sounds like from the neighbor's perspective that that's not the case. Sounds like maybe from your perspective, that may not be the case too. And I'm just, I'm just trying to wrap my head around if there was just miscommunication or something slipped through the cracks or what it would take for us to, even if it's water, we seem to be in a pretty good business with water. I'm just trying to figure out why we couldn't water the grass for them so that their neighborhood looked at the same level it was when we took it over. May- maybe I'm missing something.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilman Cavanagh, I have to look into it. The bottom line is, it may have been that the sprinkler system that watered that lot was part of the well, although I, I don't think so because the well hasn't run. The well didn't run when we acquired it. The well had been, essentially, they had stopped using the well because it didn't meet regulatory requirements. We acquired the site as part of the takeover of that system. We have abandoned that well because it's no longer usable. I don't know if, I have been out to the side, I don't know if it's been sprinkled or not. I will take the gentleman's word for it. And it's probably not been sprinkler, but it should be, like all of our pieces of property that we purchased that are vacant lots that we plan to eventually do something with, we try and keep, you know, keep the mow, the weeds down and so forth, but we don't necessarily irrigate them because our plan is to either get rid of them. And I think in this case, we will ultimately try and sell this land, get rid of it. It serves, it really serves purpose for us. So, yeah, what it would take to irrigate it again.
Mr. Stewart, perhaps you guys could find a way to engage with representatives here and have the conversation about what this, and if that is the intention department. I mean, obviously, we do have processes to get rid of property, so you can't guarantee it, but at least engage in conversation with the neighborhood in the short term.
Sure, I'd be happy to do that.
Okay.
Mayor.
I had a question for Mr. Campbell. You talked about no sidewalks along roadways. Were you talking about Victory, Meridian, your streets? Does it kind of all over?
I do want to clarify that for you. Our, inside of our subdivision, it's completely sidewalked. But any, to leave our subdivision anywhere, there's not a single entrance with the sidewalk that takes you out of our subdivision, except one, which is South Bearclaw, which connects Timberline to the other new subdivision that went in just adjacent to Meridian Heights. Willy Creek Heights is, I think, my specific area.
And Mr. Mayor, to that point, I was previously on council when we were handed a very difficult situation. This was a county subdivision that sewer system was failing, DEQ was requiring immediate action, and we had to come up with, Mr. Stewart and the public works folks were very, very hard to come up with a plan and not break the bank of the residents. I mean, this was, this was a difficult deal. And it wasn't fair to hand the problem to, to the ratepayers of Meridian to fix it because it's not their problem. And this, this was a very difficult site. Kind of gives me, breaks me out into a sweat a little bit when I think about it again. And, because, you know, we had a real situation where we wanted people to have an adequate sewer system that functioned well. But at the same time, we had to do it within very limited means of the property owners and city residents. That was, that was a lot of work. And now, I, when we look at this site now, in terms of the sidewalks, we were on a pathways tour on liaison to Parks Department, and our pathways tour went on the site. So we came from the southeast corner of Meridian. You have to cross on the east side to cross Victory and then you cross on the north side to cross Meridian to get to the template path. There's no, no route.
Yes.
Anywhere else. And, and we want our pathways, I'm sure everyone on council knows, to try to follow the canal as it is on the north side. It follows the Ride and Ball. But for whatever reason, it was not allowed by the irrigation district to stay on that course and come across to that, to that south side, hence the pathway being on the north side. So I think we're dealing with an issue here that, to Councilwoman Strater's question about the irrigation district allowing something to happen, my guess, I thought the mayor was generous and I was flimsome to none. So we've been dealing with them on this issue. So it's one of those things, I think we're going to have to figure an alternative plan, pathway. Now, there's some good questions raised about where does the crosswalk work to get to that pathway? Where does that go to? What sidewalk can we do? What about the property to east and those types of things? But I appreciate you, Mr. Campbell, for some of the things that we have to deal with. But I, I'm glad we're getting things a little more dialed in than it was way back then. That was, that was, that was very difficult. It's one of the hardest things that I had to deal with when I was on council at times. I'm glad it's worked out, but I understand you, sir. I try to do here nice, a nice place to be.
Yeah, that's what we're looking for. Thank you.
Any further questions from council? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, do we have anybody else sign up to testify or raise their hand?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, no one signed up or raised their hand, except Mr. Lucas from ACHD has raised his hand.
Okay.
I'm bringing him into the meeting now.
Mr. Lucas, you're recognized when you're ready.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, first off, can you hear me?
Yep.
Excellent, excellent. I just wanted to, you know, stand up and offer myself to answer any questions. I think the applicant and city staff adequately described the, you know, the conundrum that we're in here. I just did want to clarify that, you know, staff, when we, when we issue our staff report from ACHD, you know, we are required to follow the codes and policies of the highway district, which require sidewalk facilities. And that is why we were so adamant that the applicant, you know, work with the irrigation district to try and get that sidewalk on one of those canal roads. And I, I don't believe that ACHD's Development Services staff have had the opportunity to review any alternatives or any potential crossings or anything like that. So I wish I had all the answers tonight, but I don't. And I certainly don't want to get in front of the ACHD commission, which would have to hear any appeal or special consideration on this application. So with that, I can stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lucas. I'm going to ask you a very unfair question. But to your knowledge, if ACHD were to rebuild this road, based upon what you know about this current road, would you see it being built in the same basic manner with the pin and the turn and the drop in elevation? Or would you see likely modifications to this road if it were to be rebuilt?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you know, this is the type of situation where ACHD would really have to do, you know, a pretty significant concept study to determine the right solution. As stated tonight, there's a lot of challenges with this roadway. The canal creates really significant issues when it comes to realigning the road. And so this is where you have to look at several different alternatives and have some sort of, you know, design considerations. And, and I guess I'm giving a very long answer to a straightforward question, which is, it's going to be hard and it's likely that there's going to be some significant reconfiguration in this area.
Perfect, thank you. And I won't hold you to that.
Thank you.
Counsel, any further questions for Ms. Lucas? Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Joe.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just to put another option out there that, before we close the public hearing, something that I had, the staff had mentioned before, but as Lucas, Mr. Lucas discussed, they had not really heard many alternatives until such time that the applicant makes a formal appeal. But something I think could work is putting up a trust for the sidewalk, knowing that this area of the road is going to be completely redone and reconfigured at some point in the future. That way, we make sure that we have some avenue to add a sidewalk or at least mitigate the cost for a sidewalk rather than just giving it away for free. Not that we're trying to do that, but, and then also potentially doing the pedestrian crossing as an interim solution, as Mrs. Layton stated. It's just, again, one of those things that we can't and shouldn't just waive the requirement. But at the same time, I don't know that it's fair to the applicant to stop the entire project for something that is not a hundred percent in their control. So just wanted to make that clarification.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Strater.
Guess just, you know, I'm struggling a little bit with how to look at that, right? I mean, presumably, when this property was bought, understanding the canal and the various aspects of the site were part of the due diligence process. So I, you know, I'm struggling a little bit with just saying that we shouldn't punish an applicant for a situation out of their control. I mean, presumably, they're aware of the situation when they did their diligence.
Uh, thank you, council. Is there anybody else who'd like to testify on this application? If not, it might be applicant to come up and close.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, members, members of the council. In response to what Joseph just brought up, that was one of our suggestions was, it's not that we don't want to contribute to the improvements, but, you know, is there some sort of road trust that we could potentially do? Or, you know, if a variance, if a structure was defined as, if a sidewalk could be included as, in the definition of a sidewalk being a structure, then maybe it would comply for a variance. You know, at this point, it, as everyone has discussed, there's some longer range issues here that will take more than just our frontage. And so that's where we thought maybe the road trust would be a good solution for that, to provide much-needed homes and to comply with some of the obje- other objectives of the comprehensive plan and to grow the community. And in the interim, you know, evaluate that, you know, the potential and discuss with you folks this evening if, if that's even on the radar that we could provide, you know, something, a crossing to the west as, as a temporary alternative until some of these bigger issues get resolved. If not, you know, it essentially condemns our project from a, from a development standpoint because there's just, we don't have an opportunity to put anything. So we've been really trying to work with, with, city staff has been great and ACHD staff. And really, in our conversations, you know, we understand that staff can only communicate to us what the requirements are. And that it's individuals like yourself and the commissioners at ACHD to, to make any determinations that maybe can vary from that. You know, we feel like it's a very unique situation, the infrastructure there with the canal and the road, the topography of the site. And just really at least let us keep moving forward in this process as we go through, you know, and develop our plans for final plat and try to get this resolved. And it's not in the five-year work plan on your pathways. It's not on the ACHD plan. I don't know if that's something that can be modified or, it sounds like, according to testimony tonight, that there's concerns in the entire area, not just this frontage. But appreciate your time this evening. Can stand for any additional questions.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Real quick questions regarding, when, when is your meeting with ACHD? It's October sixth, sixth?
Uh, seventh, I believe.
Seventh, Wednesday, okay.
Yes, yes, councilman.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all for your time this evening. Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Perro.
I'm going to close the public hearing for H two zero two zero zero six seven.
Motion dies for lack of a second at this time.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
I'm certainly supportive of, I feel, councilmember's motion, but I just thought, councilmember Hoagland started by saying this has got a little bit of a sticky wicket. And sticky wickets tend to create more conversation. I just think it's best to keep the public hearing open in case we need to reach out to the applicant again.
Well, Mr. Mayor, just to.
Councilman Hoagland.
Throw some things out there for discussion purposes. I, I am interested to see what ACHD can do or will be doing. And, and, and I know that's a delay for, for the applicant, but sometimes, I think Mary made a point about making sure we get this right. And even then, we don't know if whatever happens will be an answer that will work. But I would like to see what another agency can do in this situation. I also recognize the fact that to not do anything doesn't solve the problem. There will be no access. I mean, that's it. Nothing will be done. And I, I think there are solutions there that we could look at, but there is that unknown about where the crossing goes, how does it work? What about tiling the canal? I, you know, I know they do laterals and they do other smaller drains and other canals, but I haven't seen them tile the Ride and Ball or New York Canal or anything like that. I don't think that's done. I think there's bridges and crossings, but as far as tiling, I, I, but I'm, I'm not positive, but I don't think that's, that's done. So we have to deal with what we have here. And, and I think there's, there could be a solution that creates a pathway from the subdivision going in on the west to this subdivision and potentially down the road for development to the east that gets people to that intersection. And we've got to deal with some things over there. So, but I, I think we don't want to be too hasty in, in moving forward until we get more information on that. Maybe look a little bit more, Joe, on, on the trust and, and what, what that is involved with for this type of project, our code, Mr. Nary, on what we can waive and can't waive and making sure we not get into a situation there. So that's, that's just my thinking on it to see if, see if we can get some answers first and then make a more informed decision later.
Thank you, Mr. Hoagland. Um, I'll just weigh in from my perspective, is a sidewalk on the south of this road doesn't make a whole lot of sense next to the canal. You're, you're really not accessing anything from here to the intersection. Um, but a safe passage on the south side of the canal does make sense, and I think that that does lie to the property to the west. And I think that that requires planning and coordination to create a alternative route for people on this side of the victory to make it safely down to Meridian Road and in that area, 'cause that's ultimately the only place that, if you have a sidewalk on this side of the road, the only place it takes you is to the intersection. So, how do you safely get from this property to the intersection? To me, it's through the property to the, to the west, to the east, unless the road is completely reconfigured in a way that then a sidewalk may make sense. So, I'm, I'm, you know, I can't sit here right now and say a sidewalk, you know, makes sense from that perspective, but a plan makes more sense and not a cross here now and wait and see what happens in the future. That, to me, is not a plan.
Mhm.
Um, and we, we know we have a property to the east that is wanting to develop, they've had plans, they, they are open, willing partner to discuss a solution, but I think that there needs to be some investment made to find a viable solution that can be done. A ten-foot multi-use pathway through this property and through the properties to the west, um, doesn't have to be on our pathways map, it can still be put in to solve the issue for everybody from that standpoint and then leave the road to ACHD in the future to figure out. That's, that's my two cents.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
I, I think to that point, I, initially, I wasn't incredibly warm to the idea of a continuance, but the more I think about it, I think it, not only does it, good opportunity for Council to hear from ACHD, I think it also creates opportunity for the applicant to work with the, uh, the owners of the property to the east and maybe bring back some additional creative proposed ideas for us to at least consider. If I'm, if I'm not mistaken, I think that project though to the east was withdrawn.
Correct.
So, again, that also creates opportunities to, to work collaboratively, hand in glove, to bring forth something that, that meets our needs. Um, I agree, Mr. Mayor, I don't think that just a sidewalk there makes sense by itself. Um, getting people to Meridian Road is, is obviously the end goal, so, um, I know we're not at a point where the public hearing is closed and making a motion, but I think using this opportunity between now and the ACHD meeting to explore some creative solutions is, is, is a good opportunity for the applicant and for the city.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
Thank you. I, uh, I think I, um, most, most strongly relate to Councilman Hoagland's, um, comments, and, and I, I really am concerned about the, the element of, of us, you know, not, not being able to waive and not, shouldn't be able to waive our city code in, in regard to com- completely dis- you know, um, there isn't really any way for us to waive the requirement for the sidewalk, so, I don't, I, I'd like some clarification before we get to our, the next meeting where we'll, we will, um, be making a decision from our legal department about how that will work for us, because I guess where I'm still struggling is, is, you know, this is a requirement that we cannot waive, so how, e- even if, even if the applicant, and I think the applicant's done a really good job trying to find solutions for this, I mean, I applaud them for all the hard work they've done, even if they provide us with the greatest solution regarding the, um, pathway, the multi-use pathway to the north, are we, are we still going to be able to approve the application as it stands, um, without a sidewalk? Just, just wanted some clarification on that. Um, the, the applicant can go and pursue all these other, um, options and alternatives, and I think they should, but if that's one thing that we can't change, I think we're gonna, um, be challenged to make this, this decision again, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Strater.
Um, I, I support a continuance. Um, I, I think that would, you know, I would encourage the applicant to really work with the city and the, you know, property owners that order your property to try to come up with a solution. I, I tend to think that we do need just a broader plan for the area. Um, I, I, I take, uh, Councilman Hoagland's point that, you know, right now there are no, no improvements and no pedestrian, uh, access and connectivity, but I just don't wanna be hasty in approving a, a solution that hasn't been presented, that has a full vision, that has safety concerns in mind, that has a rationale of why this is the right place to cross and how that interacts with the traffic, and we, we really need to see that laid out. I think we need kind of a, a fuller solution, even if it's an interim solution, but we need something that's more fleshed out. I'm just not comfortable with it right now. I'd ask the applicant, uh, if we have a continuance, do you want that to go past the ACHD meeting? Would you like a few more weeks after that? Maybe some feedback on, on the right timing? I'm not sure I understood what, what that was with that meeting, but that's my feedback.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to provide comment to that point?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, uh, Councilwoman Strater, um, you know, ideally, we'd like to keep this moving forward as, um, you know, as expeditiously as possible. You know, we were hoping to get on the, on the twenty-third agenda, um, with ACHD. We were told that it would be the seventh. Um, you know, we'd like, we'd like to keep moving forward. Um, it, tonight, to me, what I'm hearing from you is, uh, that, um, you're possibly open for maybe some sort of alternative compliance or something that maybe, you know, is supported by, um, by Council would help solve this issue, um, in the short term, um, or in the interim until there's a longer range plan and, um, some funding available first and larger capital improvements, but, um, we would like to try to move as quickly as, um, keep moving as fo- forward as quickly as possible.
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Nary.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council, uh, on that particular point, we'll, we'll take a look and see if that's an alternative that we can support. Um, I would remind the Council again, this property is already annexed and it already has a preliminary plat that's been approved that I think expires, is partly with discussions, so you're, I know you're looking to expand it, so that's really the, the decision point, but I mean, this property already had an approval to move forward and entitlement, so we, we do wanna remember that that's still out there, that this is already entitled property, it's not annexation, so it is slightly different than many of the applications you see, but we can look at this particular issue 'cause I think that is a big sticking point for, for this, for the plat that was probably approved as well as this, so.
Um, thank you, Mr. Nary, and, and also, if I may add, just in terms of the questions about the parcel to the east, and Joe, if you could bring that, um, back up, um, there was that larger application that was, um, had, has just been withdrawn, um, but that barely touches our northeast corner, and I, I don't know if you've got a Google Earth image or a LandPro image that you could pull up there, but, um, the majority of, let's see, let me try to, the, um, do you have a Google Earth one? No? Okay, oh, right, yeah, right there where your arrow is, that's an, that's an out parcel that was not part of that larger application that had just been withdrawn, and that one was, um, it's a pretty substantial piece, it's, um, four acres, it looks like, um, according to my records. So, and that's, um, so when you look at the property lines in there in terms of continuing, 'cause we had talked about, well, maybe we do a path through the park that's on our north end, and it's like, well, we've got the sidewalk right there, so that would seem to be somewhat redundant, and, you know, Joseph was great at looking at, okay, how can we make this work and connect along the street in this area, just given this very unique geographical situation, so.
Councilman Hoagland.
Question for the applicant. Um, Ms. Layton, it, it, I just wanna reconfirm, it does look like you provide two access points to that property to the east, up there in, on the north side, and, and is that Winnipeg, I think, down on the south side? Is that, or does Winnipeg already go into the existing development? Like, can't tell from this.
Uh, Council, Councilman Hoagland, um, actually, what happens there, Winnipeg, right now, as it exists, there's, um, a round of, uh, cul-de-sac there, and then that's being removed as we develop the site and, and connect the roads through, so, um, yeah, right now, it just turns around right there. And then, of course, we're providing the stub street, um, up on the north section of our, um, project, we're providing that stub street to that out, out parcel that's about four acres.
So, Mr. Mayor, follow up.
Councilman Hoagland.
I guess more of a comment than to, to the applicant, that you are providing access points that can be part of the solution for us to, to get from west to east and vice versa a- as, as we try to unravel this thing and put it back together and something that will work for everybody, so.
Yes, that is correct, and thank you, um, for that clarification, Council, Councilman Hoagland.
And one, one last question and information for the applicant, a question for the applicant and information for the Council, I guess, is looking at our, our hearing schedule, on the thirteenth of October, we have one public hearing, and then on the twentieth and twenty-seventh, nothing yet. So, just to, as we, we look ahead, and I, and I recognize that for these developments, time is money, and, uh, um, but, uh, a- as you understand, I, I don't think there's necessarily opposition, but at the same time, we, we have to make sure we, we're able to make this function in the, in the larger sense, all the properties involved that will eventually be involved, so.
Uh, thank you, Councilman Hoagland, for your comments, and that's why we had suggested, you know, trying to do something, you know, an interim alternative compliance, um, you know, a la- a land trust, some, or a road trust, something that we could, you know, um, keep moving forward, but, you know, ultimately, building a sidewalk that would be torn out, you know, next to a road that's unsafe, that was one of the suggestions, just seemed like, why would we do that? It would, you know, we're just creating a, an unsafe situation and tearing out infrastructure eventually, which would cost more even just to tear it out, so. I appreciate your comments and questions.
Council, any further questions, comments, motions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
I'm gonna move that we close the public hearing on item nine, H dash two zero two zero dash zero zero six seven.
Second motion.
I have a motion second to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion on the motion? Um, just I'll ask my, I, I'm gonna ask a question, but, Mr., if we're, if this was to be continued, would it be preferred to be closed since we would be taking additional information based upon what happens at ACHD?
Uh, Mr. Members of Council, that's what I was curious, 'cause if, if the desire is to at least take whatever information, or in some of the others, uh, you were asked for, uh, a legal opinion about the road trust as an alternative compliance, uh, you asked them to work with the neighbors to bring some information back to you, so I would suggest if, if so, to simply just continue the matter to your next hearing date or whatever date you choose.
Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to withdraw my motion.
Uh, second agrees. I have a motion second, uh, to withdraw the motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Question for either you or, or Mr. Johnson, is that public hearing that we have scheduled on the thirteenth expected to be lengthy?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, I'm gonna defer to Mr. Dodson, that is Modern Craftsman. I believe that was lengthy, that was continued, was not as lengthy the second time at planning and zoning. Do you concur, Joe?
Yes, uh, Mr. Johnson, the Modern Craftsman shouldn't be that lengthy, however, I did have an application that should be continued from next week to that hearing as well, uh, for City Council, and that's a time extension. That is not as, as simple time extension as it should be, but (sigh) it will be there. Um, so, considering the ACHD meeting is on the seventh, staff does recommend that we give a, you know, a couple of weeks following that to make sure that we have adequate time, and by we, I mean myself, to work with the applicant, depending on any potential alternatives.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Appreciate that, Joe, and I don't wanna overly burden staff, wanna try and kinda thread the needle between me and the needs of the applicant and, and, and supporting you guys. Think it maybe go right in the middle on the, the twentieth, it sounds like we don't have any public hearings right now, um, so, unless I'm hearing any concerning shoulder shrugs or not, I move that we continue item nine, H dash two zero two zero dash zero zero six seven to October twentieth.
Second motion.
I have a motion second, continue this item. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? The ayes have it, it's continued. Thank you. Uh, Council, next on is future meeting topics, anything under that item? If not, we'll move on to item number ten.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Councilman Hoagland.
I move that we go into executive session per Idaho Code seven four two zero six A one A and F.
Second.
I have a motion to go into executive session. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, call, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Cavanagh?
Aye.
Pro.
Aye.
Strater?
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye. All ayes, we adjourn in, into executive session.